Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of May 28, 2024 of the Select Board of the Town of Milton. I'd like to begin by calling this meeting to order and ask everyone present in the room to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment tonight? Before we start, there's going to be some ground rules. We allot 20-minute, one minutes total for public comment at each meeting, three minutes per speaker. I don't see anyone online, but we'll start with you, sir. You could come up and just please sign in and then state your name. Thank you.
Sure.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Spencer Kyle Johnson, and I live at 127 Blue Hill Avenue, and I'm also a town meeting member from Precinct 10.
Mr. Johnson, closer to the microphone.
Yeah, of course. Spencer Johnson, Kyle Johnson, 127 Blue Hill Avenue, and a town meeting member from Precinct 10. So I wanted to come this evening to mention and bring up something that's come up rather soon and rather recently at 7 Brush Hill Road, which is an abandoned brick building on a DCR property on the border of Mattapan and right around the corner from where I live. I think technically would be in Precinct 10, but also borders several neighborhoods in one and two. You may have seen recently that the DCR has requested statements or expressions of interest from groups who may wish to become curators of the building. This is part of a program DCR has where they ask an entity to pay for renovations in trade for a long and affordable lease. Example of this is the Speedway Building in Brighton, so close to Storo. It is a DCR property that was converted into a mixed commercial and public space. So it has several commercial vendors, but also some community space that is open to the community and restrooms that are open to the community, which is a very interesting and positive model, I think. Several of us in the neighborhoods around that area have been talking and took interest in that article and that interest and have thought about what we would love to see in our community and in our neighborhood because we have long felt that there is a strong need for more community space of some sort, whether it's public or commercial or some combination of them. We recognize that any options for the town to have a direct relationship or stakeholder are limited and that there's lots of challenges facing the town in terms of budget over the next coming years. But we've been talking about what sort of creative options could we come up with, what partnerships could we come up with that might make a way that we could have a vested stake in this property? Or at the very least, how can we have a united expression of what we would love as a community and at least insert ourselves and be involved in the DCR process and in conversation with them? We've already been collaborating with the Youth Task Force and the Parks Commission, and I know we're not on the agenda and you have a full agenda, but just wanted to put it out there for a conversation at some point in the future. We would love the Select Board's support in some way. Specifically, we would be interested in the formation of a task force to study this further and perhaps interface with DCR and to do grassroots community engagement to learn what the community would find interesting and helpful in the area. And we're also hoping to gather support from various boards. We already have support from the Youth Task Force and the Parks Commission to...
Thirty seconds, sir.
Sure.
Thank you.
Either write or sign off on a letter of interest to DCR to continue a conversation with them. And we're also taking steps to fill out a CPA grant application as well. So those, that's where we are in the conversation. It's continuing to grow as an informal grassroots neighborhood conversation about how we could be involved in this process, and we would love the Select Board's support and would love to continue talking about it at a time that makes sense for all of you. Thank you for your work and your service, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for Citizen Speak? Good evening. If you could just state your name, sign in and then state your name, please.
Janet Ferron, 71 Central Avenue, also a town meeting member, Precinct 2. And like the speaker before me, I'm also here to speak in favor of some type of usage for the 7 Brush Hill Road property, specifically leaning toward community center. One of the reasons that I'm really in support of this is that I've seen, as all of you have seen, our town divided politically, what's been happening, and we don't have a space that we can come together. I may vote very differently than you, but we can come together, talk about gardening. We can talk about cooking. We can, you know, talk about some shared interests that are not in the political realm. And I've lived in communities and visited communities where they do have this type of setting that people, and you know, neutral place, people can come together. I also see it as a place for some cultural awareness. Milton has become very diverse. I'm working with several individuals to write some grants for multicultural programming. This would be, you know, kind of an amazing space. We have some spaces in our town, but sometimes it's churches and maybe people aren't comfortable of different faiths. We have some, you know, the Milton Arts Center has been great, but just having a place where it would be, as I said, a neutral space, people would come together. The location is great. It's right, our beloved trolley goes right there, can walk on the bike path, and as also mentioned, it hits a bunch of neighborhoods in there. So the other thing that I really want to stress is that the impact it would have on our youth. I've worked for over 40 years with adolescents in both Boston and the suburbs and really have seen there's some kids that don't have a space. They're not into sports or their parents can't afford the sports. A lot of what, you know, equity comes in in terms of paying for things. I spoke with my son, who's 25. He grew up here, Glover Elementary School, and then he went on to Milton Academy for high school. And I asked him about it, and he said, Mom, he said, you had no idea when I was at Milton Academy, having a student center.
Thirty seconds, ma'am. Thirty seconds.
Okay. So the importance of that, the importance of bringing kids together, keeping them away from Cunningham drinking at night, what are the alternatives for them? So I really want to stress that. And I know there's some grants out there. I talked about community grants. Looking at emotional and physical well-being is something that there are monies for, so we would be able to look at our programming, how we could support that. So I just think the impact that it would have on our already amazing town would just be something so enhancing for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi. My name is Lucy Rugo. I am a new town meeting member and parent with children in the public schools, one in Glover and a stepson at Pierce. And one reason I ran in particular is because I care a lot about our public schools and in particular have been very concerned about the overcrowding in schools. You may recall at the most recent town meeting that during the school update, it was mentioned that the upcoming kindergarten class is going to be the second biggest class in 20 years. And so this overcrowding problem is not going away. I know that the school building committee has been working for over five years to develop a solution to this problem, and they're getting ready to ask for funding in the fall. And I'm here to request that you, the Select Board, support this effort. I would also like to request that you, the Select Board, draft a letter to Senator Timolty requesting an update on the status of the land swap and requesting a formal response as to why the land swap legislation, Bill S. 2549, is still awaiting a third reading, since time is of the essence to address this issue for our children. Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you give your address, ma'am?
Oh, 43 Brook Hill Road.
You wrote it, right? You wrote it on the sheet?
I wrote it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? No one online. Am I correct? No one online? So that will conclude Citizen Speak. Thank you, everyone who attended, and we will move on to item four, which is a discussion recognition of several officers who are recent recipients of the Robert P. Dana Distinguished Service Award in law enforcement. A little bit of history, since I can tell a little bit of history of the award before I call, before we call the officers up. Robert Dana was an MDC police officer assigned to the Blue Hills Barracks, which was now the State Police Barracks in Milton in 1984, my first month on the job. On early in a Sunday morning, he and a Milton officer stopped a vehicle on Blue Hills Parkway in front of the Parkway Methodist Church. I'm pronounced to both of them, the person driving that car was a serious felon who was on parole from state prison. A violent struggle ensued, and Officer Dana was shot and killed in the neck. He suffered a bullet wound to his carotid artery. What made it even worse was that the third or fourth officer to arrive on the scene was the first female police officer who had been hired by the Milton Police Department five years earlier by the name of Charlotte Berkowitz. She was the six-month wife of Robert Dana. She arrived on the scene to find her husband in traumatic arrest, and he would not survive. Since that time, and it's been 40 years since I was first appointed, many offices have been the recipient, many Milton offices have been the recipient of this distinguished award, which is given at Law Day by Justice Mark Colvin. It actually was given by District Attorney Morrissey with Justice Colvin this year, and I was, I found out about it the day before and was privileged to attend it. There were 42 recipients total of the Quincy District Court area, which was, which is Milton, Quincy, Randolph, Braintree, Weymouth, and Cohasset. And tonight, we have five offices, five Milton offices, who were the recipients of it. For a little bit of history, two of these five offices is the second time they have received it, Travis Weeks and Brendan Douglas. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to call the five of them up, and I will read the story. So if you guys would just come up right here so we can catch you on camera. I know you don't want to, and I'll introduce them. The chief is here. Well, chief, you want to go to the table if you want, whatever you want to do. Just, I got to get you, so he gave us directions, how you, just so that camera can catch you. I'm going to introduce to you from, from your right to my left. So first officer is Travis Weeks, the next is Sergeant Tim Doyle, Sergeant Brendan Douglas, Officer Buddy Coggan, and Officer Jay Conklin. Anything, chief? You got any?
I'll be very brief, as I always am. Just generally, you know, this is a quiet town. There isn't a lot of violent crime, you know, but we're not immune. And, you know, I just want to talk generally very briefly before we recognize these officers. You know, even though it's a quiet time, town, very little crime, you know, we're not immune. Things happen. A lot of it's behind the scenes, a lot of it's kind of on the low-key routine manner. A lot of those cases often involve mental health, substance use, sometimes just, you know, plain old criminal activity. And I just want to credit, you know, all the officers before we recognize these five. You know, there's a lot of incidents that, you know, were handled kind of routinely. You never hear about them, they make the news. And I'm a big believer, you know, the best things in the department are probably the things that you never hear about. And, you know, we had, you know, a mental health crisis where somebody pulled a paramedic, excuse me, pulled a knife on a paramedic. We had a domestic arrest involving a gun. We had another gun incident with a person who was, you know, suffering from a substance use crisis at the time. So there's a lot of officers that could have been recognized. So I say that just generally because I think they all deserve credit. At the same time, you know, these five kind of above and beyond that were picked as like, for special recognition. But, you know, as Chief Wells mentioned, the, you know, the Dana Award is designed for that, but I don't want to minimize all the other great things a lot of officers have done. You know, a lot of these calls, they kind of come in routine, but end up very challenging. I credit these five officers, everybody in that department, they've really done a great job of embracing, you know, de-escalation techniques, crisis intervention training. A lot of the training we do, I also want to recognize the town, this board, the town administrator, who have always supported us in terms of funding and providing those opportunities for those trainings. And it's those trainings that prevent a lot of these, you know, horrible things you do see on the news, not just injuries to officers, but injuries to individuals and civilians and stuff. So I just want to recognize everybody who's not here tonight, and then, you know, special attention for these five. I'll let Chief Wells read it, but you'll get the gist of what they did, certainly noteworthy incident.
So for everyone present, everyone who are watching, I'll just read a short synopsis of Chief King's recommendation to Judge Mark Colvin recommending the for this reward. On Saturday, May 20, 2023, Milton Police Officers Henry Coggan, Jason Conklin, Timothy Doyle, Brendan Douglas, and Travis Weeks responded to a shooting inside a multifamily dwelling. Upon arrival, officers secured a perimeter to the building and made entry. Officers located several individuals inside the victim's apartment. Based on the crime scene, the officers proceeded to another apartment where they were able to quickly detain several other individuals. These officers were able to arrest the party responsible for the shooting and recover three illegally possessed loaded firearms, included large capacity and defaced serial numbers on the weapons. These officers' immediate investigation and quick actions were critical in solving the crime, making an arrest, and removing illegal firearms from the community. We look forward to Law Day and appreciate all that you do on behalf of Quincy District Court Community, and that's from Chief King to Judge Colvin. So for people, as the chief mentioned, and I say in this room very often, that you can ride around in a police car all day long, and you'll never really see the things that challenge police officers each and every day. Each one of them could probably write their own book. I know, I know from our experience, they could. Travis Weeks, just, and I remember whenever I see him, he started writing us letters because he wanted to join the cadet program when he was 15 years old. Most of them were cadets. Buddy Coggan came from Boston EMS, who was a medic. Jay Conklin was a marine, and Brendan Douglas is, and Tim are two of the future of the leadership of this committee. So I think as a community, we each owe them, as well as every man or woman who wears the shield of the Milton Police Department, our congratulations and thanks, and congratulations to each one of them on this award. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Thank you. They've had enough pain. Comments or questions, anyone? I did all the talking. We're good? Anyone? Go ahead.
I was just going to thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for your service to the town and your bravery in these difficult times and situations. So thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Beth. Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I echo Ms. Musto's thanks, and just to highlight, I think, something that Chief King mentioned, the de-escalation techniques and other techniques for law enforcement. I know that that's, those can be particularly difficult and require a real high degree of discipline and self-awareness. And so particularly in a situation like this, I think, just to call out that using those techniques, it limits the violence and it leads to justice. And I'm so grateful that you are all safe and continue to serve, but thank you for going through those trainings and for all that you do for Milton. We appreciate it very much.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say that, you know, for the general public, a lot of times, no news doesn't catch any attention, but the fact of what you do every day is what brings that no news, that safety that we have every single day. And I, for one, appreciate that very much.
Plus painful than a fooshot. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Weeks. Let's hope the next time you have to come in this room is to get a fooshot. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, motion adjourned?
Not that quickly.
No, I'm only kidding. Okay, item five, discussion approval. These are appointments or reappointments of our board, the committees that we sit on. So the boards we have here tonight are Select Board Finance Committee, two members, Select Board Policy Committee, two members, Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust, one member, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, one member, Master Planner Implementation Committee, one member, Milton Landing Committee, two members, Municipal Broadband Committee, one member, School Building Committee, two members, our designees, Municipal Public Education and Governmental MPEG Access Board of Directors, one, Select Board Member, our designee, Youth Task Force, one member, Climate Action Planning Committee, one member, our designee, MBTA Advisory Board, one member, our designee. Okay. I'm going to do this quick. So of the committees that I'm going to go currently that are on, Erin is on Finance. Select Board Policy Committee is who?
Me.
And me.
And Roxanne.
Yeah.
Trustees are you, Ben, right?
Yes.
Okay. Capital is me. Master Plan Implementation is Roxanne. Landing is you and I, Roxanne and me. Municipal Broadband was Mike Zulis. School Building Committee was Mike Zulis. Municipal Public Education and Governmental MPEG Access.
Me.
Who's that? That's you too.
That was me, yeah.
Youth Task Force was you, Ben, right?
That's right.
Climate Action, who's on that?
Mike.
No, that's a, designate, Run Israel is the select board's designate.
All right. And that's enough. Okay, so I'll do that. Okay, so that's good. And who's, who's MBTA?
It was Mike.
Correct. But wasn't that Denny? Wasn't, my memory was always the town administrator prior to Mike. I'm, it was always, I'm not, look, there's a lot of work we have already, so I'm trying to, but you want to be in the MBTA advisory?
No, no, I just was saying, what I said, we need to dig into the committees a little bit.
So I know Erin would like to stay on Finance. Policy, Roxanne, you and Nate? Either one of you?
I'll stay on.
So Roxanne's going to stay. Erin, you don't care?
I don't.
Okay, so that's one. Affordable Housing Trust, I'm going to come back. I'm going to, I'm just doing the ones that I know is before I get back to the...
I'm happy to continue to serve on Affordable Housing Trust.
Ben's okay. I'll stay on Capital. I've been there for eight years. MPIC?
That's me.
You want to stay there?
Yep.
Landing Committee?
It's you and I, yep.
All right, well, okay. Municipal Broadband.
Is, Mr. Chair, if I could ask, Nick, is that a Select Board member or can it be a designee as well?
It has been a member. The charge doesn't explicitly state whether it has to be a member or not. There are currently four members on that, Mike being the fifth, no longer serving as I was appointed in his capacity as a member, but there are four members currently on the Municipal Broadband Committee out of a committee of five.
Mike's been working on this for over a decade.
So I'm fine with it. So then we're not going to do that tonight? So we'll do that. If it's going to be a designate, we'll move that to, everyone, we'll move to the seventh except us. So whatever openings, all right, we'll come back with them on the seventh. You all right with that?
Seven.
Eight. Are we here? Whatever it is, I don't, I'm looking, I'm like, whatever, we're back here.
Eleven.
Yes. You can help me ease into this. This is my first night in here. It's been five years since I was chair. Okay.
So that's G, then we're to H, School Building Committee.
Okay. School Building Committee, I understand, John, you have an interest?
I do.
So John Cohane?
And we have two Select Board members or designees. Is there another Select Board designee that's on there?
So we've never had two members, but I don't know if we have a designee, and that's because I've never, I've never...
Glenn Hoffman is currently the Select Board's designee, was appointed to the SBC when it was originally formed back in 2019. So it was Mike Zulis and Glenn Hoffman were the two appointed by this board, one of whom was a member, one of whom was a resident.
So let's back to my previous point tonight, just let's do the Select Board members and then address that at the next meeting. All right with that? You okay? All right. So that would be John. Youth Task Force, so I had some thoughts on this, but I know, Ben, you have an interest. When we started this, it was Michael and I, it became a task force because we wanted it to kind of have its own, and there were so many committees trying to bend some things out here for so many things that we do. So I just thought this is maybe one that's up and running on its own now that, I mean, we were on it to try to get it to, well before the Wildcat Den, well before, I'm trying to think of who the first she was, and she's long gone. She was very tall, what was her name? Do you remember?
No.
What was her name? Sarah? Sarah? Yeah, she doesn't live here anymore. I can't, I can see her face, I know. So I, we don't, I mean, it's up to you.
Please.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. So I, my two cents on this are, and the task force is probably ready to come in and do a report out in June on its work over the last year. You know, the, the big pie in the sky idea for the task force is the conversion of some of the firehouse into a youth meeting space. And so I think that there's still some work to be done there. I don't know that having a Select Board member on there particularly adds to that work, so it may be a case of if we want to have a designee of somebody that is particularly capable on the, the Capital space is a space that I don't have that much knowledge of. So it might be helpful to have someone who's got more of that planning capacity, if it's something that somebody else wanted to do.
Why don't I do this? Since I'm on Capital, how about, you want me to be a liaison somewhat to the fire station, and I'll just only go when they need me to go, unless you really want, I'm...
I'm happy to take something off of my plate.
Okay, so I'll do that. Is that all right? You want it, John?
Do you want me to do?
All right, you want to, I mean, you're on the building, so I don't know, it's John, it's your...
Construction, I'm in.
I think that would be helpful, actually.
That'll work. Yeah.
Okay, I'll do it.
So John, okay. Climate Action is who? Ben?
It's, no, it's Run Israel.
Oh, it's Run Israel, yeah. I can't read my own scribble.
But I'm wondering if we would do that one next time because...
Okay, yeah, that's fine, yeah. I'm not going to do that tonight.
Yeah.
I'm not doing that tonight. And the same... Lee, don't stare at your screen over there. I'm looking at you.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, if we take a vice report, I would suggest if you're, if the board is inclined to have me serve in that role, I'm happy to. They meet, they just had a meeting last week. You know, I think it's, it boos us to have somebody on there and active, so I can, if you were ready to appoint me, I'm happy to do that tonight, and I can attend that next meeting whenever it comes up.
I just, it was, it was Amory, then it was Mike. I think it's just, it's an operational job. I think it makes sense for, I mean, we get a vote, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We have a vote, right? We have a vote?
Yeah.
I've joined some of the meetings.
You have?
Yeah.
It's an important place to raise the Mattapan Charlie and other items.
Mr. Chair, if I can ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Brown.
Who's number I, is Roxanne keeping that as well? Because right now I've got her on four, four committees. Yeah, the MPEG ballot board. So you're going to stay on, you're going to be on four and be the vice chair? I'm just asking, because that wasn't, that's... The MPEG, they don't meet that often. Landing's been very quiet since we have everything all leased out, basically.
I'm only on one, Roxanne, so if you'd like to take something off your plate, I'm happy to pick something else up.
We could do Policy, Ben.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to stay on.
Policy is, right now is, it's Richard and Roxanne, is that right?
No, it's me and Roxanne.
No, I'm not on it.
I'd be happy to stay on, I mean, I'm happy to stay on. It's just, it's four committees, and we have other people, other members as well that should be on committees. I mean, I've only got, I've got two so far. John has none, and Ben has one.
John has two.
John's got two.
Task Force and School Building.
And School Building. Okay, so, but Ben only has one.
And I've got one, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, Roxanne.
Policy makes sense to me, but if you don't, if you want to keep it, then maybe there's something else.
Let me think about it then, yeah.
Well, we're going to vote, so.
Right. What are you thinking about? It's not a big lift for me to doubt.
It's not a big left for me to doubt. I mean, we didn't, how many often did we?
Right, but you have four, and other people, other members of the committee don't have that many.
I was trying to lighten this load, though, he said.
I could also take, I mean, yeah, because I'm also off of Finance now, so...
I thought you were, no? I mean, Richard, are you keeping him on Finance?
I was thinking John was...
John is going on Finance.
I talked to, yeah, I talked to John about it.
So again...
So sure, whatever you guys want to do, that's fine.
I mean, it just, it just, even off the way that this looks...
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
All right, hold on. Give you one second.
All right, so, me and John.
So Finance would be John and?
Erin.
Erin.
And then?
Policy is gonna be?
Erin and me.
Yep.
Okay.
Then Ben, you and I both have two.
Yeah, and I'm, I keep the trustees.
Yep.
Capital Improvement is Richard.
I'll stay on that.
Is Richard.
I'm only staying on two, which is Capital, it's G, I'm only gonna stand Capital and Landing.
MPeg is Roxanne. Milton Landing is Roxanne and Richard.
Yep.
Yep.
Broadband, we're gonna table that, because we're hoping you can put Mike.
Yeah. At least one appointee for a school building would be John.
John.
And then Roxanne.
MPeg is Roxanne.
And then John, and then Nick.
Is John. Then Climate Action is who? Oh, that's right, I'm on it. All right, so did you get those, Lynn? Someone wanna make that as a motion?
So...
Do we have to do these individually, or do we?
No, we do one motion.
No, we can do them all together. Do you want to read them all?
You got them. Do you write those all down? You got them? Okay, so she's got them.
So you don't want me to read them all?
I don't think you have to. Oh, man, you want to do it again? Go ahead.
Let's do it again for the record.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that, under item five, number, subletter A, the Finance Committee shall be made of myself, Erin, and John; B, Select Board Policy Committee shall be made of myself and Ben; C, the Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust shall be Ben; D, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee shall be Richard; E, Master Plan Implementation Committee shall be Roxanne, sorry, there's no last names; F shall be, F, Milton Landing Committee shall be Richard and Roxanne; G, we are tabling till our next meeting; H, we are appointing one position to the School Building Committee, and that shall be John; I, the Municipal Public Educational and Governmental Access, Inc., Board of Directors, shall be Roxanne; J, the Youth Task Force shall be John; K, we already have, we do not need to appoint; and L, MBTA Advisory Board shall be Nick Milano, the Town Administrator.
Do we have a second?
Could I make a friendly motion?
Please.
For the second School Building Committee seat, can we return to that as part of the tableed appointments?
Sorry, yes, yes. And so the second School Building Committee shall be returned to during our June 11th meeting.
That's correct.
Right? Yep. Thank you.
You're good?
Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. See that? Painless. Okay, now, item six.
Mr. Chair, if I could...
Go ahead, go ahead, Sarah.
As we approach June 30th, we'll have a number of reappointments for all of our boards and committees coming up. There are openings. If folks are interested, that information is on the town website, how to apply, the application is online. So this is the time of year that we're looking to try to staff up these committees as we head into the new fiscal year. If you're interested, not sure what you want to do, please reach out to me, and we can help you out. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
You're here. And thank you to all the volunteers on all the committees.
Okay? Good? Okay, moving right along. Item six, discussion approval, the reappointment appointment agreement between Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator, and the Town of Milton. Is it proposed motion? I'll read the motion, is that okay, as chair? You all right? So I'd like to move to reappoint Nicholas Milano as the Town Administrator and approve the appointment contract between Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator, and the Town of Milton for a three-year term.
I'll second.
Comments? All those in favor?
Lucky to have you, Nick.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Can you get us all a cup of coffee?
They'll be ready for you next week.
Listen, one thing about me, I spent my whole career in tragedy and hardship, I have to have humor. Okay. Thank you. Item seven, which is, I've asked Nick to add a consent agenda, if you haven't noticed, figure this out. I realize how important our time is, and I'm gonna try and move our meetings as quickly as we can, so whatever Nick can put onto the consent agenda, he does, so we, I have, I'm gonna move to approve a consent agenda as it appears on the agenda. And any member can remove, can note, similar to town meeting, if you don't want to have it all, we can, we can remove it. And I'm looking at my wrong agenda, so which ones?
Oh, it's him.
So I believe these are the decrees, oh, here they are, okay, so, thanks, Ben. So the discussion approved the consent agenda rather local initiative program application for two affordable units, which are being done by Walcott Woods under their special program. These are the final two, correct?
Correct.
These are the final two of six, and they'll be on Warren Avenue?
Yep.
Correct? On Warren Avenue. The others are proclamation declaring May is ALS Awareness Month in the Town of Milton, and I'm going to read that. C is proclamation declaring June is Pride Month in the Town of Milton, and Mr. Zoll will read that. And D is renewal of the Town of Milton's membership in the Regional Home Consortium for a three-year period commencing July 1st, 2024. Motion would be to move the consent agenda as it appears on the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
And then we'll read those. Okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Just wondering if we could just take one minute for Nick to explain, for people that are watching, what that is on D?
The home consortium?
Yes, yes, please.
Sure.
Do you second?
I did second with that, yes, thank you.
So we are in the home consortium with a number of our surrounding communities, Quincy, Braintree, Randolph, and a few others. I'm missing out the top of my list. Money from the federal government flows to our communities, they then go into a regional fund, the home consortium, that can be used to fund various home projects and affordable housing projects. If the town were not part of a consortium, it would not have access to these funds at all, but as being part of a consortium, we then become eligible, so a certain amount of money flows to the consortium through Milton every year. If a project were to come up that a developer were looking to do deeper affordable housing, it is a potential source of funding for developers. It's been used in Milton to help fund a group home about 10 or 12 years ago, and it was also part of a homebuyer improvement, or first-time homebuyer program and a home improvement fund, so there are different uses for the funds. Now, it's typically used to help support deep, more deeper affordable projects when they're proposed in communities.
Thank you.
So, do you want to read for us?
Mr. Wells, I was just gonna, I will read the proclamation with thanks for the opportunity, and I just, if it's all right, I'd like to just say a few comments about Pride Month. Currently, there's 515 bills across the country that are attacking LGBTQ+ rights in a whole variety of states. A lot of people who are, you know, identify as LGBTQ+ are feeling very much under attack and assault right now, and so I think we are to be commended as a town for continuing to stand up as a place that has no room for hate, putting the pride flag up on the gazebo for the month of June, and continuing to let our LGBTQ+ residents know that we love them, and we support them, and we will protect them. It's more critical this year than it has been in a long time, and so just thankful to the Select Board for bringing us together and for giving me the opportunity to read the proclamation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bradley?
I just wanted to let folks know that this year's Milton Pride event will be taking place on June 9th, which is a Sunday evening, starting at 6 o'clock. We do a parade, a car parade through the town, and then it ends at Pierce Middle School, where we'll have some people speaking, and we will raise up our youth who are part of the LGBTQIA+ community, and I hope to see a lot of residents there at that event.
It starts at Pierce, too, right?
It starts at Pierce, correct, Mr. Zoll. Thank you for that clarification. 6:00 PM, June 9th.
I thought it started at the high school.
It goes around the high school.
You want to coordinate that with MPD, just so they know?
Yep.
Okay? Okay. So I just want to make a comment on this before I go any further, because there's something that I've been wearing now since last August, which is this blue square that I wear in my, John noticed, and Ben has noticed that I wear it. You may notice several prominent people wear it, I've seen Tom Brady wear it, and I've seen several rabbis and elected officials, I saw three people wearing it on days. So this square is the Anti-Hate Foundation, was started by Robert Kraft, the owner of the New England Patriots, about a year ago, long before the conflict that is existing in the Middle East now. And I remember my family is on his staff, and I asked, I was at an event in Aspen, Colorado, and I asked if I could have one, and he gave it to me, and I wear it constantly as reminded to people just how much hate can exist in the world. And to each one of you on this board, I will be glad to obtain one for each of you if you would like it, and I will have them at our next meeting, or I'll give it to you. I don't want to make a big deal out of, it's my, someone mentioned it to me the other night at Madre, and I'm very proud to wear it, and I'm amazed how many high-profile people and leaders I've seen wearing it, and I'm very proud to wear it, because anti-hate, not litigation, but anti-hate endeavors and work has to happen every single day. And maybe it's my police background, unfortunately, you see a lot of hateful things in the world. And clearly, when I was, traveled to the Middle East in 2017 for the Anti-Discrimination League on a international police mission, I saw some pretty hateful things when I was over there that have really exasperated into what the world witnesses today, so many of us, and that's why I wear it. It's the blue square with a hashtag, you can Google it, it's, you'd be amazed how many people wear it. So I'll be happy to have them for each of you, and...
I already have one.
Oh, you already have it, so I got...
Just not wearing a jacket today.
All right, so I, I, I gave one, John asked me, and I told, and I gave him one the other day, and so after that, I ordered one for all of us, so that we would all have them, and I'd hope them, but I will have them at the next meeting, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do your proclamation?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that now, so, should I do that? No, no, you do, no, go ahead, oh, you go.
Proclamation. Whereas the Town of Milton is a friendly and welcoming community that celebrates and promotes diversity and inclusion, and whereas the Town of Milton recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas the Town of Milton recognizes that our nation was founded upon the principles that all people are created equal, and that each person has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas the Town of Milton is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its residents and preventing discrimination and mistreatment based on sexual orientation or gender identity, and whereas the Town of Milton is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our town, and whereas the Town of Milton recognizes the importance and contributions of members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning community, LGBTQ. Now therefore, we, the Select Board, and on behalf of the Town of Milton, hereby proclaim and recognize the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning Pride Month, and we urge all residents to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty, given this day, Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, signed by the Chair on behalf of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The second proclamation that I have was submitted to us by Heidi Vaughn in recognition of ALS Month, which is this month as well. And many of us may remember the Ice Bucket Challenge from many years ago, which really brought a great deal of attention to ALS. ALS is a very difficult disease, which literally traps a person's mind and their body, where the body just deteriorates breath by breath, and ultimately is, becomes a terminal disease, or is a terminal disease. So I was very pleased when Heidi reached out to me, I wanted her to come and do it, but I think she had a busy night tonight, so I am glad to read this on her behalf, on our behalf. And it begins as follows. Whereas amyotrophic glottosclerosis, ALS, known by many as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease that attacks nerve cells in the brain and spinal cord, making even the simplest movements, walking, speaking, and gesturing, difficult. And whereas approximately 5,000 people are diagnosed with ALS each year, with a new diagnosis every 90 minutes, and whereas ALS has no cure, it's securing access to new therapeutics, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies of vital importance to people living with ALS. In addition, clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing the quality of life, and fostering assistance, assistive technologies for all ALS patients. And whereas 2024 marks the 10th anniversary of the Ice Bucket Challenge, but there is a great need for public awareness and investments in ALS research in order to eradicate this debilitating disease. And whereas May is dedicated as ALS Awareness Month, a campaign to encourage individuals to learn more about the circumstances facing people with ALS, the detrimental impact of this disease, and its effects not only on a patient, but on his and her family and the community. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of Milton, proclaim the month of May is ALS Month in Milton, Massachusetts, given this day, Tuesday, May 28th. Richard G. Wallace, Chair; Roxanne Musto, Vice Chair; John C. Cohane, Secretary; Erin G. Bradley, Member; and Benjamin D. Zoll, Member. Given this, we have a second?
I'll second.
No, we have a second. Are we all in favor? Are we in favor of the?
Yes.
Both of these? All those in favor?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
That was for the whole consent agenda, right?
That was the whole consent agenda, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And these will be posted on the town's website?
Correct. Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So just, given that it's May 28, and that was for the month of May, I wonder if, you know, next year, the town meeting schedule is usually going to be that we're not going to be making proclamations about May until the end of May, unless we could do them early in April. So it might be a good idea to just note for our calendar for one of the April meetings to remind ourselves about.
No, it's a good catch. We'll do that. Yeah. Heidi, when I did talk to her, when she asked me, we were in the middle of a town meeting when she notified me, and she's like, when's the next meeting? I go, until May 20. But I just think.
We can do it in April.
Oh, I agree. Yeah, I agree with that. So why don't we, we'll put that on the April flag list. Got that, Lynn?
Thank you.
Paul Lynn, thank you, Mr. Zoll, for that. Why don't you get those done, Nick? Okay. I'd store your thing on it.
Oh, no, this is mine.
All right. Yeah, that's Ben's. Did I take yours?
That is, yeah.
Sorry. My bad.
Different kind of chicken scratch.
My bad. Okay. We're all in consent agenda. Okay, item eight. I can't believe this. Item eight, discussion approval, meeting minutes. So we have meeting minutes before us tonight for April 2nd, April 23rd, May 1st, May 6th, and May 7th. The motion is, would be to approve these unamended or amended minutes dated the 2nd, 24th, and April 23rd, and then a second motion to move the May 1st, May 6th, and May 7th.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna be abstaining from two of these votes because I wasn't present for them. I know John wasn't present for a couple, too, but.
So I knew, I knew that's why we were in two votes. So which two were yours?
Yes, we have to do it individually. So I wasn't present for the April 2nd or the May, I believe, 6th meetings.
That's correct.
Which, for the record, for those watching, those were the only two Select Board meetings I've missed since I joined the Select Board.
You're gonna stay after school.
So, you know, I accept my punishment as, but, and I did just, so I'm not gonna vote on the, on the minutes for the second, but I'm concerned about the addendum that's been added here that Ms. Musto is, because I have watched the meeting, and I just, I don't think that it's seemly to be asking members to explain their votes during, really, at any point. I don't think that's something that we've ever done before. And I know that that's something that now has come up. I would be concerned to have my own name listed here as someone who's asking a Select Board member to, one of our colleagues, to explain their own votes. So I would, and again, I'm not, I'm going to abstain because I wasn't present for this meeting, but I would suggest to Ms. Musto that she might want to reconsider that addition. That's just, those are my two cents, and I don't need to have a conversation about it. But of course, if she'd like to respond, that's fine.
Sure. So I think that the minutes should reflect what happened at a meeting, and as far as asking the question, it was because if you're going, usually if you're gonna continue to abstain on something, you should, you should have a reason that you're going to do that. Like, when I recuse myself from certain things, I state the purpose of why I'm doing that, or abstaining if I don't have enough information. And so I think, when you're an elected person, I think you should explain that to the residents.
Well, if I may, sorry, respond. I didn't know if you were finished.
Go ahead.
I don't think that it's our place as colleagues to question the votes of our colleagues, whether it's a yes vote, or a no vote, or an abstention. I think if residents have questions about people's votes, then the residents know how to get in touch with us. We all know the residents know how to get in touch with us. So I just don't think that it's really proper to ask anybody to explain any kind of vote, whether it's a yes or a no or an abstention. I think that during the courses of our discussions, we explain, you know, how we feel about things, or we don't, and then we vote, or we don't. I think if you're a constituent and you're concerned about the way that someone's voting, you can reach out to them. But I certainly don't think that it's our job to police our peers on their voting. So, again, I'm gonna abstain from voting on the minutes. I just think that it's a practice that we should probably try to avoid.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. So I think that there's been a lot of divide in this town, as we all know. And I think that this, this addendum is something that if people wanted to understand more about, they would watch the meeting, which is available online all the time. No other vote has been questioned at all on our Select Board since I have been here. And I feel honestly like this is being pointed at me, and I do not think that that's a valid thing. And I think that at this time, we should rise above, and we should show by our actions that we are coming together. If anybody has any questions about my vote, my phone number is out there, my email is out there. I am willing to talk to anybody at any time, as I'm sure all of us are on the Select Board. I do not think that Lynn's accounting of our meetings is incorrect. There's been a lot of changes of those meetings and what is being reported by her. And so I am just here to say that I will be voting no on this amendment. I take my votes very seriously. I stand by my votes. And so if anybody has any questions about them, I am available at any time. May I respond?
Sure.
I would just like to assure Ms. Bradley that this was not singling anybody out, and I'm surprised that you would feel that way. And so if you felt that way, I do apologize that you felt that way. I did feel that it was something that should be asked because it was a consistent theme and usually on that issue. And if, as I said, for myself, when I've recused myself or abstained, I've stated a purpose or a reason so that everybody understands why I've done that. So if you've helped singled out, I do apologize for that. It was not meant to single you out. I would have asked anybody else that same question. So that's where I was coming from. Thank you.
May I? Should I write if I comment now? So I've been here a lot longer than I ever thought I'd be here. Meeting minutes are something, as Lynn knows and as Jen knew before her and Susie, I'm not a big, 99% of the time, I'm fine with what's written because it is true, everything that we do today is on tape. We're on camera every time we go home. But we have had some tough meetings here, and Ms. Bradley's right. It has been, and if there's one thing that I'm going to try and do, which I've tried to do my whole life, is to try and bring some sense of common leadership here amongst us. We may not always agree, but we need to be respectful of each other, and that applies to all of us. We need to represent the citizens of the town, whether they voted for you or not. You just have to do that. There are people that I've had relationships with in this town that I put handcuffs on and put in jail, but I have relationships with them today. I just had to find a way to do that. I think people expect out of us, and I've said since day one, I don't see sides. I see zero, 2186. And we have an obligation to every person, rich or poor, black or white, gay or straight, whether we agree with them politically or not, to try and do our best to represent them in the most fair and respectful manner. And I know this chair is just a figurehead, but that's the way that I just see things. And I believe in that. And I'm, I understand your right to one of, and I even know why you did that. I get it. But I do think the time has come that we have to try to move on beyond this because if we can't work together collegiately here on most things, not all things, most things, then what are we wasting our time for? Why are we in Canada? Some may be more conservative, some may be more liberal. It doesn't matter to me. It doesn't. So I just ask if, going forward from here, if we can just, people have their reasons for votes, whether we like it or not. You and I, like, they have, and to me, they have their right to vote, and they just, like, have that right. And so everything is on tape, and Paul Lynn's over there writing like blah blah blah. So I don't want to ask you because that's up to you. But I, I just, I think we have some really huge challenges coming before us in this next year. And some decisions are gonna be really hard. Some people will like some, and some people won't, not like some. Some will be able to make, and some we won't be able to make. But we represent the town of Milton, and I just think we need to try harder to give people what they expect. So. You get where I'm coming from? I know you don't, I know, I know you don't, I know you don't want to hear, but I just, I just, you know me, like, I'm, what you see is what you get. People may not, and.
I understand what you're saying, and certainly there's a tape. I just, I guess, and maybe this is just me, just in general, with minutes, I think minutes should reflect what happened at a meeting. That's all, simply for me, is minutes should reflect what happened at a meeting. So if you guys don't want to put it in, then just vote that you don't want it. You know what I mean? I'm fine with that. Like, whatever you guys decide. I just, that's how I take when I do any, how many minutes.
I get it, I get it.
For any committees that I've been on, when I've been secretary for any committees through the years, or anything, I try to reflect everything that happened at the meeting. Our meetings, of course, are televised, but not, everybody does that. Sometimes people just want to read a quick synopsis of what happened at a meeting. So whatever you guys decide to do.
Do you, do you understand where I'm coming from with this?
Of course I do. And I certainly think that we all have to work together, but there's got to be a mutual respect, and that's what I would say to my fellow members, too.
I get that. I agree.
There has to be a mutual respect.
That was the root of my raising it.
You know, so, and I just hope going forward that there will be that respect from different members on our board.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
Respect, I completely agree with respect, but I think every member of this board has a right to their own vote.
Yes, I agree.
And I believe that their right to their own vote is their personal reasoning for their own vote. And they have a responsibility, not to each other on this board, to explain their votes. They have a responsibility to the members of this community. The members of this community know exactly where I stand on this. They know exactly why I voted this way. There is no ambiguity here. This is something that I have been 100% the same person on since the beginning of this. So for me, Mr. Chair, I agree with you that there should be respect, but there should also be grace. And I think that grace is something that's missing from certain members. And so I would just like to say that by doing this, it is pointing out one person who has stood on the same side of this since the beginning it came out. And the fact that now, even after you, Mr. Chair, have spoken, we are still here, let's just vote and move on. We've given this too much oxygen than it needs, and it is a shame that we have given it this much. At this point in time, Mr. Chair, I'm fine with whatever you choose to do. My vote and all of our votes are our own, and we have only the responsibility to the residents. Thank you.
This job pays a lot of money. Mr. Cohen, go ahead.
I guess I just want to say that I hope, I come here hoping to be respectfully, we're not all, it's easy when we agree.
It is.
Easy when we agree. It's when we don't agree that it's the toughest time. And I, I hope to listen and bring respectful disagreement. We will disagree, and I hope we can solve these type of things. I really do. And I, there was a, there was a perfect thing this morning. Ken Burns commencement speech for Brandeis University. It's perfect. You have to watch it. It's exactly what, huh? It was. It's exactly what we need. And that's what I hope. If I don't do anything else, that's part of what I hope I can do here. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you can feel free to take that out, then.
No, I won't, I won't, no, I wouldn't ask, though. That's up to you. It's up to you. You authored it. So if, I only bring this up because it's here, and I really want to, if it's included, it's included, but I, I just think, moving forward, we have so many things we need to accomplish together that we don't need the finger pointing. We just don't. We may not always agree, but that's why I'm mad on it. Some people may like it, some people may not.
So that's fine. I get the sense of how people are on the board with this, so I, I'm fine to take it out.
So you would have to, I won't make a motion to that. If you want to, if you so, let me ask you this. So this is, which one are we referring to? Just bring me back.
Second.
April 2nd, so I have it circled. So.
Just take out that.
I'm gonna remove the word amended.
Sure.
Is that all right? And we're gonna move, we're gonna do just this one right now. I'm gonna move to approve the meeting minutes dated April 2nd, 2024. Mr. Zoll is.
I'm abstaining, Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Cohen, you are out.
You need a second first.
You'll second, I need to, yeah, you're gonna, you second?
I will second.
Seconded by Ms. Bradley. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained, so abstained by Mr. Zoll.
I can't say anything.
Yeah, abstained by Ms. Musto, that's fine. Ms. Musto, that's fine. Okay. Now I'm gonna move to April 23rd, which the only one who would not be, would be Mr. Cohen, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes dated April 23rd, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 23rd.
Motion by Ms. Musto. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Bradley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Cohen is abstaining.
Mr. Cohen is abstaining, yeah. Okay, now we're gonna go to.
Now you can join him.
I have to abstain.
So now we're gonna move, now we're gonna move to approve the meeting minutes dated May 1st, 2024. In May, you're on the 6th, right, Pat?
I'm out on the 6th.
In May 7th, 2024.
Yep, I second that.
Seconded by Ms. Bradley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, proposed motion for the meetings from May 6, 2024. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Made by Ms. Musto. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Bradley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstained, Mr. Zoll. Wow. Eight o'clock, look at that, Elaine.
Still light out.
Town administrator, to our newly.
Yes.
Renegotiated, extended town administrator, Mr. Milano. Oh, I forgot something. Okay.
Do you want me to go, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, you go. I'll do it when I get to Chair's report.
We have potentially some lengthier agendas in June, just so. I will put fair notice out there. We'll see. We may. Just a couple of thanks. We haven't had a regular Select Board meeting since the election and since town meeting, so just want to say a thanks to the staff that works behind the scenes to pull off both the town election and the town meeting. A lot of work goes into the events leading up to them. I usually say it's kind of unusual to get to town meeting because my role is, once we get there, a little more done, but it takes a lot to get there. So huge gratitude to Lynn for all the help she does with the town meeting, with the town report, and getting those out in time. Town clerk and her staff for all the work that they do ahead of both the town meeting and the town election.
She isn't even raising up her head. She's just writing it right away. She isn't even looking at us.
Again, gratitude to Kevin Cook, Lisa Hearn, and her team for Memorial Day yesterday. It was good to see the crowd out. It was a nice day with the weather holding off, and so appreciate everybody who was able to attend. Apologies to everybody trying to get in around town, town hall for the last week and a half. It's been disruptive with the work, site work going on behind town hall for the final touches on the site work related to the new fire station projects. Hopefully, we'll be out of the way tomorrow. There'll be still some work to do in May, June, July, but those projects are winding down. Circulation should return to normal by the end of this week, so we appreciate everybody's patience. Anybody who's interested in submitting an eligibility application for the Community Preservation Committee process, those are due by the end of this week. And it's an eligibility application, a funding application to be due later in the year, but it's, it gives an opportunity for the committee to provide feedback to anybody's application. So please submit, if you have a thought, an idea for feedback. Two new employees recently. Nick Connors, Assistant Town Administrator, joined on May 6th, the first day of town meeting. Cheyenne Frazier started as the Assistant Planner last week, so we're excited to have them on the team. And lastly, high school graduation's coming up Sunday, so congrats to the class of 24. And that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradley?
Can I ask him a quick question? Is there gonna be a, the years past the high school graduation day, there's been a parade around town via cars. Are they planning on doing that again this year?
I don't know if they do that now that they've gone back.
Is it not official anymore? Okay, so that was for COVID. It was during COVID, and so I just wanted to know if I should go to the end of the street with my cowbell or not.
I have not heard anything.
I've not heard that either.
Okay. Thank you all. No cowbells. Got it.
Did they do the last day of school, the seniors did, right? Well, that's kind of.
Oh, that's, that's a way unofficial.
Anyone else before, anyone? Anyone? You?
If I may?
Go ahead.
It's worth noting, I think the rugby team is top of the state right now. It was headlines for, on the Milton Times. So congrats to the rugby team and the men's volleyball team for the high school. This is their, this first season of the volleyball team, and they've made the playoffs. So I think that's, that's a pretty remarkable accomplishment. Thank you.
Well done.
Aaron?
I, thank you. Mr. Chair, if it's okay, I have one more.
We playing pickleball here?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, if it's okay, I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
The boys.
So much for eight o'clock.
No, stop. This'll take two seconds.
My first meeting is chair.
Stop. The boys' track team for Division III came in second, so they are the silver medal winners for Division III track in the entire state.
That's great.
And I am super proud of them. My son's on the team. I'm doing a little brag moment, but.
I was gonna say, I know, they sound a little parochial.
But it's the, but it's the whole team, and everybody contributes to the team, and so yay, Milton Track Boys for coming in second for Division III.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
I have one thing to add. As long as we're talking about different exciting things, I went last night to the I went last night to the, the All-Star game for the Milton National Little League against Milton American. And it was very close, but Milton National won.
That's your side of town.
It is. Yes. And they, it was a very exciting game. Lots of people out there. And it was pretty exciting. Everybody was very excited about, they had Wahlburgers there. So everybody was very excited about that. Yep. But it was a great time. Done a nice job. So I just wanted to compliment them on that.
Is that an East versus West game?
Yeah.
Oh, that's funny.
Yeah, because they town split National American, Nationals left side. National kids always played at Kelly Milton. When I was a kid, baby, we played, had a huge, we played at Andrews. So on a sad note, and I meant to start with this and it's been a couple of weeks, but I would, it would be remiss of me not to mention this individual. Many of you may have read it in the newspaper. Dave Walgren, who managed Cunningham Park for well over 40 years in this town, a retired teacher from the Randolph Public Schools, who was such a fixture there and made sure that so many programs happened from the pool to men's bowling to everything. He wasn't even retired a year and he, he was diagnosed with cancer and he passed last week. But Dave was, when you talk about partners in the community, and I know his dear friend, Paul D'Amano, our recreation director, who's watches our shows regularly, has no idea that I'm saying this, but I know Paul and Kevin, Chris and worked very closely with him. And I know how many parents and how many kids have worked there, coached, lifeguarded, how many people have swam in the, just, and it's very sad to hear of Dave's death. And I just think that before we finish tonight, I'd like to ask for all of us to have a moment of silence, if that would be okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. May David rest in peace. So that's all I have in Chair's report. I don't have anything. So, oh, we're going on executive session. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, no, sorry. Go ahead.
We have public comment response.
Oh, yeah, public comment response. Is that what you people were waiting for? So we do have public comment response and I jumped right past it. So public comment response. I can comment a little bit on the issue of Seven Brushel Road. We're very familiar with it. We've known about this for some time. Personally, I was involved back when I was a deputy chief. I was assigned to a regional group when the idea of the bike path was first to, it was the bike path that we have, the Emerald Bike Path is mirrored after a bike path that was created in Providence, Rhode Island back in the 1980s. And that's how the idea and the concept first came about. We're very familiar with the building. It's, it is personally, and I know Mr. Zoll has, I've talked to both Representative Driscoll and Representative Brittany Foucault, who's district it is. This is something we would have to buy, which is going to be a significant, the second thing is it's limited and you can't change the outside of the building. But the thing that I do know most about that is in the bike path project, when the money was obtained and they reached Matapan Station, the original intention was to go underneath, underneath the bridge and come up by that substation, which was going to be, and I believe it was you, sir, who mentioned it, it was going to be public restrooms and a, something like a, some type of stand that would be open seasonally for people using the bike path or being in that area. DCR has since made that, it's the only crossing on the bike path that we actually have to cross in public way. We have to leave the bike path and cross four lanes of traffic. I do know from numerous traffic planners and even my own time as being chief in traffic, because this happened on my watch was, there was a lot of discomfort about making that because you're crossing six lanes of traffic against a bridge that takes 40,000 cars a day. And when we're talking about kids using it as a regular place of like joy or like recreation, as one DCR person said to me the other day, okay, so 100 make it across safely, but the, you know, the 101st dozen. And one of the things that I carry with me is in my time as chief, there were three pedestrians struck and killed just on the section of Brushel Road between that substation and, and Truman. So DCR has, which is how this building came to go up for sale. They abandoned the plan and they're bringing it back in Matapan and they're going to bring the bike path along the waterfront on the other side and build a bridge, something similar to what goes to Ryan's Playground now to bring it back to Milton. Because if, any of you ride the bike path from the substation, that's how it was, it was a sub police station when I was, that's what it's always been called, down Truman, you notice that it comes to an abrupt stop. There is no connection. There's no, it ends. That's the end of that. And that's the dilemma that DCR has been trying to work on now. So we are aware of it. We have had some informal discussions about it. It's really a park and it's, it would really, and if you want to weigh in on this at all, Miss Vaughn, you rise it down. So I don't know if you do or you don't, but and the fortunate thing was is our new assistant town administrator came to us from, from DCR and he has a wealth of information on it as well. So because as Rep. Driscoll said, had we known about this two years ago, we probably could have got it for free if we'd have had. But now it's, we're in the same bidding pool as Starbucks or anybody else who wants to, to try and get it. That's the, anything that I left out there?
No, I think, as Mr. Johnson had mentioned, the park commissioners did have it on their agenda. Tim sat down with Cheyenne with them. So I think, you know, we're, we'll never say no to an opportunity and we'll kick the tires on it. Happy to have any conversations and then debrief the board as needed as we go along here. And we certainly would want to advocate for the town if there's uses that might not meet our vision too. I think there's both sides of that is make sure we can work with DCR to something that works for the town and also make sure it's something that, you know, something that wouldn't be beneficial to our community and to Matapan community as well.
DCR put some tough restrictions on it too. You can't, right? You can't touch the outside of the building. Has, you have to maintain this historic look. I mean, it's.
But we're not, Mr. Chair, if I can just ask, we're not saying no right now. We're still willing to kick some tires, right?
Park and Rec is. I mean, I don't, I don't want to get ahead of our skis. To me, this would really be.
No, I don't either, but I don't want to also take our skis off.
No, but I, I just, to the second aspect of public comment, that's the 5,000 pound gorilla in the room that we have confronting us right now, which is the school project. On top of if you, if there's a, there's a hearing next week, there's a public hearing on the 6th, I think, that MPIC is hearing because they want to look for like $7 million for a garage over here. So we've got, and let's not forget, the pressing thing is we're looking at potentially an override, operational override, which is the most to me, understanding, and Nick and I met with Chair Carroll and the superintendent, assistant superintendent last week, is without an operational override, everybody's hurting. Not, not, I mean, everyone. And as I said to the superintendent, who's never been involved in, and at least for me, I've had the benefit of being on eight or nine, chaired one override committee. So they're hard to get. And this will be 4 million, at least 4 million, at least, right? You're in a finance, I mean, you look at, I mean, op is gone. It's all those little.
Nobody's denying that there's going to need to be an override next year, Mr. Chair. Nobody's denying that. We've been saying that on the finance committee now for two years since I've been on this board. I've been telling all of y'all that we need it.
Oh, I know.
Every year we have found a Band-Aid and the Band-Aids, I think we're out of Band-Aids.
Medical cabinet looks.
Pretty sure we're out.
Oh, I'm fully aware of that. So.
So yes, this year, and in fact, last year, I said to the entire select board that I hope that they would all support an override because we are, we are out of trees, we are out of Band-Aids. I am out of every trick I can think of. Nick might have one left up his sleeve. Nope, he says nope. So I, I mean, you know, I think, I think it's, that's going to be a pressing thing, but I also don't want to take our skis off.
No, I get that too.
What I'm, I really don't want to just say no. I want to say, let's continue to have a conversation about this because I think it might be something that, you know, everybody always says to us, not just, not just the residents that came out this evening, but people always say to us, why aren't we buying more things in town? Land, we have to buy more land. They constantly, I constantly get emails about, we need more land for the town. And so I'm not saying we need to do this. I'm just saying, let's keep kicking some tires.
Yeah, I'd just add to that too, if I, if I might, Mr. Chair, that I think just keeping the door open, my hope is that maybe there's some sort of a public-private partnership that could step forward or, you know, maybe there's some philanthropy that's, that comes forward. The youth task force was supportive of this idea. I think, you know, in terms of an actual youth center, the goal would still probably be the old fire station building because it's more central. It's a little safer. It's walkable from the high school and the middle school. But that said, I think it makes sense to continue, you know, to, if, if residents are trying to come up with a creative solution to make their neighborhoods better, I think we should be open to it, at least hearing about it and then, you know, see where the chips fall. And nobody's denying the 5,000 pound gorilla.
I'm fine with that. And people just, and you've heard me say this very often about, and I said this when we were in our school meeting the other day, and you know this better than anyone. There are people in this town who just, this whole, like an override, that any, an operational, like really, they can't, and there's a reason why we have the Milton Resort Fund. There's a reason why we have the food pantry. There's a reason why my brother's keeper is here and so many others on a regular basis. Like, that's a real thing in this town. And just as I said earlier tonight when the officers were here, and I learned it from my own dad as a rookie cop 40 years ago, is that if you ride around all day long in a, in any car, just ride around and never go in a home and never talk to a resident, never hear their story, you'll never realize that some people really struggle. And that's, I mean, this, the school project alone, we have never, just a little bit historic, history. The school, when we passed the schools 20 something years ago, it failed twice. Failed the first time, failed the second time. And that was only for like $40 million, I think. And it only passed on the third time when it was 90% reimbursement because of the tax of school, to the schools and a $10 million gift from the Copeland Foundation. This time, we're talking 100, we don't even know the final number yet, but this is going to have to be entirely, there's no Hurley Amendment, there's no, we're going to have to shoulder the burden. And regardless of when the vote happens, and you heard me say this the other night to everyone who's in the room, this is going to take an educational, truly an educational discussion to get there because this is a big, big, I just heard Amy talk about, you heard some of the numbers, what this would look like. As far as just that alone, without any other tax increase for the next 30 to 40 years is really significant. So, so thank you all for, we, we hear it. Believe me, I sometimes just say, let's all kick in five bucks and buy a scratch ticket a week and maybe we'll get lucky. But then the state would take half of it, even if we won $10 million. But we, we hear it and we understand it. And, but thank you for taking the time to come in here tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the latter point, on the funding for the school board and the letter for the land swap, I, I think that that's, it is something that I'm concerned about as well, that it's still waiting for the third reading. And I may, I'm assuming, Mr. Milano, you might have more information here that the school building committee probably is going to be due for another report into the select board, do you think, for the next meeting?
Well, I think, I think what we do is, my gut is, I think, maybe we have Mr. Milano, I'll have you ask Mr. O'Rourke to call him and see where it's, because I didn't even know this. I didn't, I did not know this.
I can do that. Yeah. And then.
How long has it been a third reading? How long? Long. Okay. Five months?
Five weeks.
Oh, five weeks. Okay. Okay. In the Senate, in the Senate or the House?
It's in the Senate. And but, but we've got, we're at the beginning of June. We all know it ends July 31st. So, and it's got to go through three readings in the House.
And it's gone through two.
Right. But once it, right, once we finish in the Senate, then it goes to the House. And then we play the fun thing of back and forth twice.
Yeah, back and forth twice. Yeah.
So I just, there's, we only have eight weeks left roughly.
So maybe Mr. Milano could reach out to Senator Timulty tomorrow? Yeah. The other context I'll add is that this is also the point at which the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs provides feedback to the Senate.
Right. I did know that.
On the land moving around. So I believe that is one element that's also awaiting some action. The school building committee sent a letter to the Secretary of the EEA in the last couple of weeks that this board was copied on, providing the secretary with some additional information. So the building committee did reach out. I'm happy to as well, just to follow up.
You okay with that?
It'd be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good. Okay. Now we're moving right along. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to this.
Future meeting dates, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hold on. What can I do with that? How come that's not on my sheet?
Future meeting dates.
I printed this myself tonight with too small a font to read, which I'll never do that again. Lynn, I'm never not doing what you tell me again. So future meeting dates, Tuesday, June 11th, Tuesday, June 25th. Any future item, agenda items? Anyone?
I think, well, we said that we would be talking about the committee appointments.
Yeah, we'll do that. So we're definitely going to do that the next meeting. So are we okay now?
And then maybe an update from whatever we hear about, about the schools would be a good one.
You want to get, if, you can even send that to us.
You can send it to us.
To us, if you get it. Before the, being that way, we don't have to wait. You are in that?
Yeah, yes, totally.
Okay. So I move to adjourn from open session and enter into executive session and discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Milton Police Association and Milton Superior Officers Association based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open sessions may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the select board and the select board will not return to open session. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Were adjourned. Thank you very much.